Good evening, folks. Welcome to our regular meeting of council for Monday, August the 27th, 7:00 PM. We acknowledge we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Coast Salish people this evening as we undertake our agenda. There is a minor change to the agenda, an amendment, if you will. There was a typo on item number 7.2. Counselor Day?
Yes. Item 7.2 just didn't quite get the address correct. Everything else in the bylaw is correct. So it should read that it is for 2330 to 2344B Suk Road, not 2230 Suk Road as identified on the agenda. So I would move the agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Please to note that, or please note that Counselor Nalt is not with us this evening. He's still attending other events. Public participation? So we've all reassembled. Anybody in the public audience that wishes to comment or make a statement? Podium is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As a part of the agenda, there's a--
Could we get your name and address first, please?
Oh, yes, of course. Sorry. My name is Karen Lines, and I live at 3148 Lindlark Place, Callwood, BC. As a part of your agenda, you are visiting an item, Callwood City of Report, regarding 2330 to 2344B Suk Road. The Planning Advisory Committee specifically asked the developer to do a traffic impact study based on, I'm not exactly sure, the frame of reference that the city would provide for the developer. The item that you have before you is a parking, a parking study, and it's quite possible that the developer just wished to give Mayor and Council a parking, parking study to go with their information when they provide the, or do their zoning application. But this isn't the traffic impact study that the Planning Advisor Council specifically asked them to, to do. I'd just like to bring that to your attention. And is it appropriate at this time to actually comment on this, the, this study? Or will that time be, will be, there be more time later when it comes back up at the agenda?
No, it would be, it would be more prudent to make your comment now.
Now? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. As a resident of Lindlark Place, we are heavily impacted by the traffic on Suk Road between Machosen and Veterans Memorial. Right now, of course, it's summertime, but during regular September to, to June traffic, anywhere from 4:00 till about 6:30, 7:00 PM, there's a very, very significant traffic flow in that half a kilometer stretch. As a part of my presentation to the Planning Advisory Committee, we were very concerned as a family, myself, regarding the density that is being proposed for that development. And we're very concerned that traffic egress from our streets, and I, I did a, a number of, got a number of signatures from people along Karan and Jadell, who are also very concerned about getting on and off our streets with another access right there on Suk Road. This traffic, or this, pardon me, this parking study seems to indicate that there's less parking available for the density. I believe they say there's 35 less parking spaces than required by council. So they're leaving people with options when they buy that, into that development, where to put their car. And our concern with this is that anybody owning two or more vehicles, plus the renters that they'll be allowing in the suites that they're building, will have excess vehicles that will spill into the neighboring neighborhood. We have a population on approximately 30 acres surrounding that they're going to put, or proposing to put the same density in that five, five acres as in the surrounding 30. So we're expecting that we will, you know, we will bear the burden of parking, parking burdens. We already have people parking riding on our street even right now, this week. So please, please consider the, the neighborhood is already heavily burdened, and we're just asking that when this development comes before council, that the density be, be held to a very reasonable density. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time.
Thank you. Any other members?
Mayor and Council, Aaron Weisgiver, 3134 Lindlark Place. I'd like to echo my fellow resident on the traffic concerns. Again, looking through tonight's agenda and the report that's before you, it's 100% focused on parking, even though it's labeled a traffic assessment study. They're, they've done nothing to look at the impact on Suk Road and the access egress that will, that it'll fight on Lindlark. Right now, really any time of the day, if you're coming down Suk from Veterans trying to turn left on Lindlark, you have to take about three quarters of that length to slow down. Otherwise, you're going to get rear-ended by people not paying attention and trying to accelerate out of that major intersection. So really, they need to look at, the only answer really is to widen the road and put a proper dedicated left, left-in, left-out lane, or something to that extent that'll benefit both Karan and Lindlark, as well as this development that's going to add hundreds of cars coming and going from it. So I'd strongly recommend that before this goes to third and public hearing, that we get a proper traffic assessment and, and consider that with this proposal. Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Rick Marshand, 3508 Aloha Avenue. My comments tonight were on the parking content of the previously discussed agenda item. Comments that I've made in the past as a concerned citizen have somewhat been echoed by the previous two speakers. The parking study itself that was provided to the Director of Planning is a good study. The methodology that was used is a viable methodology. Having said that, here's the but. The data that has been used by not just this developer, but past developments as well, I personally believe have somewhat cherry-picked the available sites to make and to compare and to drive the solution to the numbers that the developer wants. I note that the Director of Planning and the city staff have taken that study and have basically massaged the findings somewhat to increase the number of parking stalls per dwelling unit. I think that's a good thing to do. Whether it's gone far enough or not, that's something for you to discuss tonight. And that's where I'm here, and I want to hear how that discussion plays out in the dialogue surrounding that agenda item, 6.1.1. That having been said, I do have another comment to make, and that's on an earlier agenda item, but I thought I'd get that one out of the way. Board of Variants, Agenda Item 4.2.1. As you're aware, although the acronym got sort of messed up a little, your Advisory Planning Commission hasn't had a meeting since April of this year due to a lack of agenda items, and, and that's, that's always possible. However, when I found out that there was a Board of Variants that hadn't sat for two years, but now it's had two meetings in a row, and I gather that this Board of Variants looks at, per its title, variances, similar content to what your Advisory Planning Commission looks at, I was somewhat concerned. From the perspective of what's the overlap? How do we de-conflict between what the board is doing and what your APC is doing? Who determines what is minor versus major? And more importantly, I can't get my hands on any terms of reference. I've asked the Director or the Communications Manager to see if she can forward me a copy, because they're not available on the public website at the moment. So with that as my concerns, I note that you're going to take the minutes and probably accept them this evening, but I think a broader question that needs to be asked is, how do we deal with your Advisory Planning Commission activities versus this board? I think the APC itself is a much more public forum, which has a lot of participation. I haven't had the opportunity to sit in on any of the Variance Board meetings. They've only taken place over the last couple of months. And prior to that, I think you have to go back almost 18 months to two years before this board actually sat.
We don't.
I think it's a newly resurrected entity. So thank you very much.
Any other members of the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mayor's Message. Just welcome back, everybody, from summer break. It's been a short one, and time's flown, at least on my calendar and schedule. A few things to report. We received recognition and acknowledgement here last week as a charter signatory to Green Communities and Green, the Greenhouse Gas Emissions Project. We have been awarded Level 3 recognition, recognition for accelerating progress on charter commitments. So we have our new deckle and new digital logo that we can make sure is on our various correspondences. Also upcoming for September is Cancer, Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, so a notice that that will be happening within the community. Also, United Way Day is September the 19th for their kickoff. Scouts Canada will be running their annual 2018 Apple Day fundraising event, so they'll be working the community over two Saturdays, September 22nd and 29th, at various locations. So if you see them out, they use their funds for supporting scouting in Camp Bernard. They do have, and we'll have it up on our, our website, any contact information, anyone that would like to see this. They have consistently raised over $20,000 annually, which 50% goes directly into their programs, and the other 50% supports the maintenance and development at, at Camp Bernard. And I think that's about it on my side. Counsel, I'll open it to you for summer.
Seaside Festival. Seaside Festival.
Oh, Seaside Festival, yes. Upcoming, September 15th. We will be fresh back from UBCM, so we'll all be bright and cherry and smiley faces that day, but that, that's a community event held at Fort Rod Hill. There is a minor admission charge this year, so be prepared for that, because last year we got off the hook. It was Canada 150, and we got afforded a, a freebie in there, but this year we'll have to, to participate with their, their program as well. Yes, Counselor Day?
Just 17 years old and younger are still getting in for free at Fort Rod Hill, so it's only the adults, and, and the charge is in the neighborhood of $4, so still well worth your money for the carriage rides and the fun, old-time things that go on at the Fort Rod Hill for our special Seaside Festival.
And the amazing changes that they've made at their site as well. Anybody else from summertime? That's it. We shall move on. Adoption for two sets of minutes, please, this evening. Regular meeting of council, July 9th, and the right, special meeting of council, July 30th.
Move adoption, Your Worship.
You have a minor?
One minor change on the minutes from Monday, July the 9th. At the bottom of page 11, we're just missing one word. The very last paragraph, when I was telling you about the highlights from the Association of Vancouver Island and Coastal Communities, that the steps the City of Callwood has been taking are in line with the recommendations from that committee. So we just missed that word, "steps," and I would second with that one minor change.
Staff have that? With the change, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Minutes to receive, please, for Board of Variants, June the 26th.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? We have one letter of correspondence requiring direction. It is a letter from Norm Scott, the President of, President of the Royal Canadian Legion, and I don't see him here in the audience to answer any questions, if there should be. This is a support letter for their application for financial assistance. It is not a financial assistance request to the City of Callwood.
I would move that we send a, a letter of support for the Royal Canadian Legion Prince Edward branch.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Moving into new business, planning and land use. This is the 2330, 2342, 2344A and 2344B Suk Road, including a portion of the city right-of-way council conditions. Staff?
Thank you, Worship. As you noted, this report is in reference to a rezoning application that was before council earlier this year. Council made the motion at that meeting that the applicant provide a parking and traffic study to the satisfaction of the city and report back to council prior to the public hearing. The terms of reference are to be provided by the city, and, secondly, that the sitting of the proposed apartment building and underground parking be revised based on required widening of Suk Road to the satisfaction of the city and report back to council prior to a public hearing. So later in tonight's agenda are an opportunity for council to give consideration of the proposed bylaw that would amend the land use bylaw to allow this proposal to proceed. The proposal is for 30 condominium units, 40 rental apartment units, and 15 townhouses. The parking requirement based on the current land use bylaw would be a total of 176 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing provide a total of 129 parking spaces, which is supported by the attached parking study. Based on the results of the parking study and staff's assessment, we're proposing that the, the amending bylaw that would create the zoning entitlement to the density and uses include a 1.5 space per apartment dwelling parking requirement, a one space per rental apartment dwelling unit parking requirement, and lastly, 2.6 spaces per attached or townhouse dwelling unit. With respect to the required improvements to Suk Road, staff are proposing that a condition of the development will be improvements to Suk Road along the frontage of the property. This would include a center median and boulevard that would be landscaped and treed along with appropriate irrigation. There would also be bike lanes and sidewalks as part of that frontage package. The intent of staff was to bring this application back to council when the improvements to Suk Road had been confirmed and that staff determined what the impact would be on the sitting of the buildings. Therefore, we determined that the building proposed, a multi-story building along Suk Road, need to be shifted away from the road by 1.5 meters in order to maintain what we feel is an appropriate six-meter setback. And I'll just note, with respect to the submitted parking study, there was a traffic impact assessment that was submitted in support of the application, and that was mentioned in the August 27th staff report. That traffic impact assessment was required not only for the city's approval of the road improvements, but also Ministry of Transportation. Because this site is located quite close to a minister, ministerially controlled intersection at Suk Road and Veterans Memorial Parkway, they are required to sign off on this project, and that traffic impact assessment was submitted both to the city and the Ministry of Transportation. The results of that impact assessment form part of the basis for the frontage improvements along with the transportation master plan, and staff are satisfied, satisfied with that aspect of the due diligence. That traffic impact assessment can be made available to the public through the public hearing package. So with that, submit a recommendation that this report we received and council give first and second reading to the proposed zoning amendment. Thank you.
Any questions of staff at this point? Counselor Day?
Thank you. Just curious on the traffic impact assessment, would we not normally have included that at this stage for the public to make comment on or have input on what the, what the traffic effect will be from this development?
Certainly, and I would expect to be part of the public record that's made available through the public hearing package. The traffic impact assessment is all about the technical aspects of the road and determining whether it'll function when the added traffic demand is created through this development. It confirms that certain movements in and out of the development will be safely accommodated through the road upgrades. Those are really technical issues that don't form part of the zoning bylaw. The parking requirements in this case are proposed to be written into the zoning amendment that would facilitate the, the redevelopment, so that's why it's in front and center of this stage of the process.
If I may, then, just to make it very, very clear, where, where I see a concern is with the reduction of 47 parking spaces for this development, where it is quite clearly stated in the report, if I'm not misunderstanding it, that there, the parking for this development needs to be accommodated within the development itself. There, there is very little opportunity outside. There is no parking anticipated on Suk Road. And the difficulty that I have with that is that we have other areas where developments have stated they would accommodate the parking within their road infrastructure, and it is, in fact, spilling out. Ponside Terrace, people are parking on Latoria Road in basically the bike lane regularly who, who live there now, and I'm concerned that without putting in adequate parking up front, there's very little opportunity to address that at any future stage. Could you confirm if there, is there something that I've missed, or somewhere else that people can park that I'm not aware of?
Oh, Your Worship, the staff report, I think, speaks for itself in terms of our agreement with the parking study. Consideration was made for the fact that there is not a lot of opportunities for on-street parking in, in this location. Certainly, we can't guarantee that there won't be spill-over parking issues, and there's various responses municipalities can take in those situations. At this stage, we're trying to take a balanced approach in terms of not requiring more parking than would be necessary, taking a results-based approach through a parking study, because we see the provision of too much parking to be a, a bad thing as well in terms of adding cost to housing and really incentivizing a automobile-centric lifestyle.
Just one last question, and on page three of five of the report, it is talking about the improvements to Suk Road and says that the development will trigger frontage improvements on Suk Road, including widening to accommodate a sidewalk, boulevard, and a shared bike slash bus lane. I'm not aware of anywhere else in Callwood where we have a shared bus/bike lane, or is that maybe just a terminology that has stuck in my mind as being unfamiliar?
I'm Your Worship. I would have to coordinate with my colleagues in engineering department in terms of other situations. None spring to my mind at the moment in terms of shared bus and bicycle lanes. I know in other jurisdictions, they're, they're common. I know the city of Victoria has implemented that kind of scenario. Far as I understand it from my work with my colleagues in engineering and the development team, is that the frontage improvements, as I said, are grounded in the transportation master plan. So I am not aware of a deviation from that plan with respect to the bus lanes and, and bike lanes.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. Through you to the Director of Planning. We know that, or we've heard from during past discussion on various applications, that the parking requirements are really out of date. So with the, the numbers that are being proposed here, are they consistent with what we have approved in the past for other projects? I'm thinking they may be a little bit higher than some of the projects?
Yes, Your Worship. These proposed parking requirements are in line with other developments. There are a couple, at least one I can think of, that is below one unit per, or excuse me, one space per unit. In the case of the attached housing, the 2.6 parking spaces per unit is actually higher than would be for a single-family scenario right now, as per our parking bylaw, rightly or wrongly. A single-family home is only required to have two parking spaces if it doesn't contain a secondary suite. So we're looking at, as I said, a results-based approach to the parking here, and, and once again, trying to take a balanced approach.
Thank you. And I guess my other comment, as a result of some comments that were brought up tonight, would be, you know, I do support the project, and I think it has many benefits, and it will really kick-start some of the refreshing of, of that particular area, because that, that stretch of Suk Road has really, it's been neglected over the last number of years. So regardless of whether this project is approved or not, another project will come along. The same challenges that the neighborhoods face right now will still be there. So what that tells me is that the city, probably sooner rather than later, will need to kind of have a look at that corridor, at least that chunk between Machosen and Suk, Machosen and, and VMP regardless, to see what the traffic impacts have been as a result of the VMP being, being built, and what mitigation that the city can do regardless of this project or other projects, but what we can do to, to minimize the, the situation for, for people on Lindlark and Karan, even, you know, simple left-hand turning lane is an example to, to reduce some of the stress. But, you know, I think we really, because that, that stretch of road has, has been neglected for so long and patterns have changed, we, we need to start looking at the impacts of the surrounding neighborhood. So, you know, I'm not sure whether that would be, you know, certainly planning, coordinating with, with engineering about looking at even some interim improvements to reduce some of the stress on, on the neighborhood so they can feel safe turning into their street. Thank you.
Any other members of council for questions or inquiries of staff? Counselor Day?
Sorry, I just remembered one other question I had, and I can't find it right now, looking at the transportation, our parking plan, but there was a discussion in the plan about transportation demand management options, and I just wondered if any of those options were implemented. Let's see if I can find it for you.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Apologies, I'll have to just go to that section of the parking study. Bear with me here, so. So page 11 of the parking study outlines the transportation demand management opportunities. So they list sidewalk improvement, so that would be something that's incorporated. Car share, they talk about specific car share groups in, in the city. Normally, we don't advocate things like car shares being incorporated into a transportation demand management condition of, of, say, a variance, simply because we've had challenges in the past with that being a viable means for people to avoid using parking here in Callwood. I know there are some programs that are starting up-- I know there are some programs that are starting up in the West Shore, but we don't know, we don't exactly, we don't feel comfortable with that being an adequate basis to reduce parking. And then they talk about carpeling here. Once again, that would be something we would leave to the residents as opposed to getting involved in a carpel program, per se. And it also mentions transit. So transit is an option for the potential future residents of this site because of its location relative to both the Suk bus line and others in the area.
Thank you. Just, it says in regards to sidewalk improvements, that sidewalks should be improved on both sides of Suk Road, from the site to Veterans Memorial Parkway and Machosen Road. But in fact, all that's proposed with the development is the immediate frontage. Is that correct?
That is my understanding of what's proposed in terms of the frontage improvements. The transportation master plan, I believe, would second that statement with respect to having that pedestrian infrastructure in place. However, that is my understanding that it would be simply within the frontage of this site that the sidewalks are implemented.
Thank you. Any further? So decisions and what will be dealt with in subsequent section. Correct? So we shall leave this and move on. 6.2 Protective Services Report from our Fire Chief Cassidy in regards to the renewal of the mutual aid agreement between the City of Callwood and the City of Langford. Staff going to do that, or Chief, are you coming up?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. The report before you deals with the renewal of a mutual aid agreement with the City of Langford. Over the years, we've had repeated renewals on this agreement, and allows us to work closely with our partners. The only difference in this one is the proposal to remove the fee-for-service provision. In various meetings, it has come up, and I believe that removing this fee-for-service is the way to go for the future, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Chief? Counselor Day?
Thank you. Chief, I understand the desire to keep it simple for the fire department, but I am concerned that a small municipality such as Callwood could easily have a lot more requests from a larger municipality for service. So how would that be monitored and managed?
That would be monitored and managed through the various chiefs. This agreement is put forward is similar in nature to the one that we already have with View Royal. The chiefs of Langford, View Royal, and Callwood are currently meeting on a monthly basis, and we would imagine that managing this agreement would be an item that we would talk about on a monthly basis to make sure that it was not being one-way or being overabused by one partner.
And what about differences in approach? Sometimes in the past, there's been a different approach in other municipalities to maybe when they would call out resources, and is that going to impact this agreement?
The current makeup between the three different chiefs, we are all very similar in our mindset and how our service delivery is. So our requests for mutual aid under this agreement would be consistent within all three fire departments that we're generally talking about. So differences in approaches, different vehicle assignments, or how we would approach a major incident, would not differ significantly between the three different fire departments, specifically in what we're talking about between Callwood and Langford. We're both now on the same page.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, worship. Well, Chief, what I'm hearing then is that there's been a shift in philosophies or ways of doing things with our neighbor, which brings it closer in line with how View Royal and Callwood operate, which is a good thing. Do you see, I mean, currently with our automatic aid agreement with View Royal, it doesn't matter if a white truck shows up or a red and black truck shows up, if it's a Callwood firefighter or a View Royal firefighter, they perform the same in tandem, they work well together, it's seamless. It's a phenomenal relationship. So do you see us moving towards incorporating Langford into the automatic aid agreement in the future? They decided not to join in the past for various reasons, but different attitudes now?
In regards to that, as right now, is take one step at a time. We'd like to move forward and renew the mutual aid agreement, so we can continue to work on that. In our monthly meetings, the current chief, Chief Aubrey of Langford, has expressed a desire to look at that auto aid scenario in the future. They're also looking at our incident command structure and a few other radio protocols, and they're evaluating our process to see how they can change or modify their process to work with us. So an automatic aid agreement, like we're working with View Royal, is a ways down the road. This agreement just generally covers situations where extra resources or they have a major event, like our Callwood Plaza fire, they had their Sheraton fire, Happy Valley School, major events. Also, this also allows us to call on specialty training. In our monthly meetings, we've identified that View Royal will be a primary water rescue provider because of their frontage and their equipment. We are going to continue to provide confined space services, because that is our specialty. And Langford is also hopefully bringing to the table in the future their ability to provide high-angle rescue services. So that would be crane tower rescue to developments in Callwood. So this agreement is the stepping stone on a greater chance to work together and work coherently together.
Fantastic. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. I don't have any questions for you, Chief. I just wanted to offer congratulations. I think it's great that you're building that relationship and that we're actually, I think today with this, residents of West Shore are actually safer as we continue to support each other, and I think you've done an amazing job of just sort of bringing the communities together, and I just wanted to offer a thank you from all the council for that. We appreciate the work.
Anybody else? There is an ask in here, folks. Can I have somebody making a recommendation?
I'll move the recommendation, your worship.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Next item, 6.3, under Finance and Admin, a report from our Director of Finance in regards to the Ocean Boulevard pump station relocation. This is a grant application report?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Shortly before Council broke for summer, the province announced that the intake was open for a new infrastructure grant funding program called the Green Infrastructure Environmental Quality Program. This program provides for approximately 73% funding of eligible projects, 40% contribution from the feds, and 33% from the province. The deadline or the window closes on this grant application by August 29th. Staff were determined to not miss the opportunity, so we reviewed our capital project, and we found that a project that we believe may be eligible for this grant funding, and that is the Ocean Boulevard pump station relocation project. Recognize that council has not had an opportunity to review the various relocation options. However, we feel that whatever option is selected, the capital project would be eligible in the same way between all options. The grant requires a specific resolution be approved by council, which is the recommended resolution in the report, and this resolution essentially reaffirms budget support for the program. Should the grant application be submitted and approved, it would provide an additional $1.8 million of grant funding not previously anticipated, and our share would have to shift from gas tax funding, which is what we previously set aside, to our own reserves. Thank you very much.
Any questions to staff? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I think it's great that we're jumping on every opportunity for grant funding and assistance from the federal and provincial government to make sure that we future-proof our sewage systems, and I would definitely have preferred to know more about the project at this point in time, but given the time constraints and our summer break, I do understand that it makes a lot more sense to get our application in, and so I'd be prepared to move the recommendation.
Seconder, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Sorry. Can you, just through your report, can you tell me how much we have already spent on a grant writer?
Through you, worship. We haven't received billing, but it's approximately $3,000 to $4,000.
Call the question, then. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Thank you. Second item, under Finance and Admin, report again on water conservation plan.
Thank you, your worship. Along the same vein, I write this report. Part of the grant program requires the city adopt a council-endorsed water conservation plan. It's a little bit awkward since the CRD is our purveyor of water and owns all the water assets. However, the city supports water conservation principles and implements many water conservation activities into its operating plan, and so the proposed water conservation plan supports that. Incidentally, there's a minor typo in the water conservation plan that relates to the sewer utility bylaw, and it says that the sewer user fees significantly directly encourage water consumption, and that's meant to say encourages water conservation. So that was kindly pointed out to me by a member of the public. I appreciate that. So we'll be making that change to the water conservation plan. So staff are recommending that the enclosed water conservation plan be approved by council. Thank you.
Move the recommendation, your worship.
Any discussion, comments, questions to staff? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Report followed up, 6.3.3, again, Director of Finance on the West Shore Parks and Rec amended 2018 budget.
Thank you, your worship. Callwood is a party to an agreement with the West Shore Parks and Rec Society as well as the other member municipalities of that society. This agreement requires unanimous approval by the budget annually, and if they don't receive unanimous approval of the budget, the budget defaults to the most recently approved budget, which in this case would be 2016. This year, Callwood was asked to approve a budget that showed an operating deficit, and so Callwood declined to approve that budget. Approving the budget with an operating deficit would create a contractual precedent for future operating deficits, so that was the rationale for declining the approval this year. Since then, the member municipalities has appointed the COOs to serve on the Board of Directors and to assist in providing a budget that meets the needs of the various members, and that's what's happened. So in July, the board approved a new budget and is requesting that the municipalities follow suit. To my knowledge, Highlands, View Royal, and Machosen, at the very least, have approved. I believe Langford has also approved since then. The new budget has a couple significant differences that are worth mentioning. First of all, there's an additional $60,000 in consulting budget, and that's in anticipation of the expiry of the current operating agreement in 2019, so that budget would fund a consultant to work with the member municipalities to provide for a funding formula beyond 2019. In addition to that, the operating expenses in the budget are now being funded by operating revenues exclusively, and the capital-funded part of the budget is being funded by reserves. So although this leaves the West Shore Parks and Rec Society in a similar financial position as the original budget proposed to you, it doesn't force Callwood to approve a precedent-setting operating deficit budget. It also clearly demonstrates the condition of the reserves, as you can see, are not in a good condition at the moment. So as a result, staff are asking, are recommending that council approve the amended budget, and also we are hoping for direction from council to write a letter reiterating the need for an adopted long-term capital plan with consistent funding for the capital requirements of West Shore Parks and Rec. Thank you very much.
Any questions of staff at this point?
I got questions.
Sure.
Thank you. Through the mayor to our Director of Finance, I am actually very confused with your explanation, and that's my fault. I'm just struggling to try and understand where you're coming from with this. Are you, are, the consulting budget, I'm trying to understand what you're suggesting. The consulting budget of $60,000 is going to go towards what again? Excuse me?
Your worship, I can answer that question. The, so I'm putting my board member hat on for a minute here. Part of this process involved a report from Jonathan Huggett, which made a series of recommendations. Many of those recommendations, the COOs sitting as board members can't carry out without a significant amount of work that would take us away from our real jobs being COOs. So we have identified items in the work plan that we would like to farm out to a consultant. And so the estimates that we've got back to do that work came to $60,000, and that's why we've amended the budget to provide that $60,000 contingency.
Okay.
Answer?
No. Yeah, he answers it, but, okay. So where I am coming from is I will not be supporting this. We are in an issue right now where there's two agreements. There's the owner's agreement that expires in 2019, and then there's a society agreement. The society agreement should run the day-to-day operations of this organization. It should not be using, from a budget standpoint, figuring out how to fix the owner's agreement. And that sounds to me like this is what this is doing, and if it's not, I'm not sure why we're spending $60,000 doing a feasibility study or a study on the operating and maintenance agreement if we do not have an owner's agreement in place. It would seem to me that we would want to have an owner's agreement in place before we begin spending expenditures on operations and maintenance. So I will not be supporting it.
Counselor Day?
Just a question. The $60,000 for the consultants, is that being shared under the same formula with all the other municipalities?
Yes, it is. The reason it is, has been put into the West Shore Park and Rec budget is so that it is distributed in the same manner that the rest of the operation is distributed.
Okay, so we would be responsible for our portion of the administrative expense for consulting, and it seems to say that the major job that needs doing is, let me find it here again. Where'd it go? Gone.
I can answer that if you want.
Okay, go ahead.
It's, I think the thrust, the major thrust of the consulting money is going to be put into the assessment and evaluation of the ability to expand the usage of the Q Center, So in other words, the Huggett report identified the Q Center as a significantly underutilized facility, and there is work that needs to be done on that facility to expand its use. So part of it is, the process is partly to evaluate the So part of it is, the process is partly to evaluate the needs to expand the use and determine if we can add those additional uses into that facility as it is, or with the amendments to the building.
So as a previous member of the board at West Shore Parks and Rec, when I was on the board, we did have a capital facilities plan. At that time, the weight room addition was done, and there were concerns with the funding of the weight room addition, and there was a long-term plan for the capital infrastructure at West Shore Parks and Rec based on the various user groups who paid to participate in the area. So I'm looking for what it said, the, what is it that was expiring there? There's something that's, the operating and maintenance agreement is expiring. So the operating and maintenance agreement, I would really like to, I would like to look at it and know and have our community know what it is we're talking about, because I watched for many years down there as user groups said that they were going to pay their lease amounts, and then some user groups did not. So that may have left us in the position that we find ourselves in today, and that was based on different owners groups being supportive of those user groups who may or may not have paid their fair share at the time. We've had a number of people leave West Shore Parks and Rec who provided very valuable services to our community, finding events to use those venues and to pay for the use of those venues in such a way that it allowed our other user groups to continue to enjoy the facilities without paying huge amounts. So I'm really wondering what has happened to that capital plan that was done five or six years ago?
Thank you, Counselor Day. Through your worship, I would say that the capital plan still does exist. I think it needs updating, most certainly, but the issue is funding that capital plan, and the most effective way to fund that capital plan so that the municipalities are all in agreement and understand the financial position of the society as it is now, in other words, where the reserves stand. And so such a plan would need buy-in for funding. That's the main issue at stake.
If I may, then, I guess what I'm really needing to know is the $60,000 administrative expense for consulting, does that provide us with a long-term capital plan?
No, it does not. It's addressing issues that were identified within the Huggett report.
So if I can be of a bit of assistance, as Counselor Martin said, there is many agreements that make up the framework on which the West Shore Parks and Rec operates on, and it's been somewhat in a state of disarray for some time, but we are running up on deadlines where legal documents of agreements are in place that need to be worked on. So this is the underpinnings. This is the work that needs to be, to happen in order for us to get those ducks in a row, the information there that the board can go forward with so that we can look at those agreements. They're all on the desk in various stages of discussion and what have you. So this is kind of like part of what's needed to get there.
Thank you, worship. The CAO did answer many of my questions that I had, and I think it's just getting to the point where we're going to have agreement amongst all our partners in adopting the 2018 budget. It's a positive step, and we know that the facilities there are underutilized, so there's a ton of potential. So we're focusing, and I do think that this is consistent with the direction that we did approve when we considered the Huggett report, so it's not a surprise. I would ask you, Ian, if we're looking at, and perhaps this stuff tells kind of into Counselor Day's comment about a long-term capital plan, but looking at some of the other facilities like Fields and that sort of jazz where they're very underutilized, however, perhaps with some capital funding could realize greater potential. So are we, is the board kind of looking at other areas within West Shore Parks and Rec to up its revenue and its potential as well?
Boards only had one formal meeting since we were put in place, so, you know, and the issue at that point was to address the budget and get this funding in place so that we could actually look at what we thought was probably the single largest issue, which was the Q Center. There's a whole series of issues on that list, of course, some we probably won't address, but the things that we think can help the organization from a financial perspective, and we think perhaps the Q Center could be an area that could help the society from a financial perspective, that's why we focused on that one. The issue that came up among council about the owner's agreement is absolutely correct. There is a problem with the owner's agreement, but we can't fix that until we can fix, until we can, until after we've addressed the issues that are upsetting the various owners. So right now, we're trying to get through the issues that are upsetting the various owners, and then we'll hopefully be able to resolve the owner's agreement that's expiring in June of 2019.
Right. Thank you.
Staff?
May I just add a little positivity to the discussion and mention that I had a discussion with the CFO recently, and they mentioned that Brooke School happened to sign a contract with them for some services for sustainable, which will provide some sustainable funding to the West Shore Parks and Rec.
And I have to say thank you for your time and work down at West Shore Parks and Rec to create this and go through and make sure we're getting accurate information that's readable. Counselor Martin?
Thank you. The Huggett report's been mentioned three or four times. It's also been mentioned in the public at West Shore Parks and Rec meetings in the past, but the Huggett report, to my knowledge, has not been released from the in-camera, and I'm wondering at what point will the Huggett report be released so that the public can actually understand the decisions that this council's making? And that can be to the mayor as well as our CAO, so.
Your worship, that's going to take the agreement of the other four municipalities. I'll raise it at the next meeting and see if we can report back to our respective councils and get an agreement from each council on releasing it.
Okay? Enough. Counselor Day?
I'd just like to ask that the most recent capital facilities plan also be shared with council and the public. It's not that old. It's not so far out of date that it doesn't help to make sense of things, and we certainly, when I was on the board at West Shore Parks and Rec, we looked at each facility in terms of whether they were keeping the lights on and paying the hydro bill, and at that time it was a concern with the Q Center as to whether it was able to be sufficiently utilized, but that had more to do with whether or not there was an application for that facility within our community. So a number of, I think historically, that information would be very helpful to all of us in understanding how our resources are being funded and utilized.
And I see our CAO making notes on that, so do you need any formal direction on that, or we are just taking it as?
Your worship, I need to look at it myself. We haven't had an opportunity to review that yet. I do have some concerns about how it was financially reported. I've had that discussion with Christopher, and I know he's been having those discussions with the CFO, so that was also addressed in the Huggett report and how the costs were being allocated and the overhead was being allocated to each of the facilities. So we do have some work to do before an updated facilities plan could be released, but certainly I'll bring that up as well.
We'll look forward to seeing it then.
To get us moving, your worship, I'll move the recommendation.
Second or please?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. 6.3.4, it is a report Director of Corporate Services, Elected Officials' Oath of Office.
Your worship, council's required by bylaw to establish the oath of office if it's departed from the core oath of office, which council elected to do in the previous bylaw amendment in 2014. So there's been a subsequent amendment to the regulation that's added two additional clauses, so we've added the two additional clauses to the bylaw, and it's proposed on tonight's agenda, and this report's just explaining that.
Any questions to staff? Recommendation, please?
Madam Mayor, I would move the recommendation that the two clauses be added.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Next up, item 6.3.5, Royal Roads University, 2005, Suk Road, structural change to their liquor, primary liquor license.
Your worship, there's four issues, I guess, at hand here. There's a change from food primary to liquor primary, and then they're also adding the CESIP building, which I believe is the new building that's just been constructed, the boathouse and the library, and it's because those three venues are all ideal for social events that potentially could serve alcohol. So they, through the liquor licensing regulations, these are forwarded to council to determine if you wish to comment. We're recommending that you don't because it requires us to do a great deal of public engagement at our time and expense as opposed to the liquor boards, so we're recommending that you opt out. Staff don't believe that there is any significant impact to the community, given that Royal Roads is in the center of a forest and has minimal impact on the adjacent neighborhood.
Thank you. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I have been in the position before of feeling obliged to comment on liquor licenses, and when we further looked into them, we realized exactly as the CAO has described that there is a considerable amount of effort required to inform the public and provide all the information in order for the public to comment, in order for us to comment. So I would simply say that I think that it is unlikely to cause any hardship to any citizens of Callwood should we choose to opt out of it, and more likely to divert our staff from important other works that they need to do, and therefore I would move the recommendation.
Second or please?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Moving into bylaws, folks. Item 7.1, bylaw number.
Pardon me, your worship, but just a procedural note, I failed to prompt council that there was, before we move into bylaws, there was a recommendation with respect to the Suk Road report, simply a recommendation to receive the report that wasn't voted on earlier in the agenda, so.
Thus was my question. We're just dealing with it at the end, so we'll go back. So 6.1.1, the Suk Road report, we need a motion to receive before we get into bylaws.
So move, your worship?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? That's it? Now we're down to bylaws. 7.1, bylaw number 1700, third and final readings for Callwood Official Community Plan, bylaw number 1700, 2018, 3900, 20OFF-188.
Move third reading?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move final?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item number 7.2, bylaw number 1734, for first and second readings only, Callwood Land Use bylaw number 151, 1989, amendment number 164 for.
2330.
It's the big, long list, the 2330 through 20.
2344B.
2344B.
Move introduction, your worship?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Move second.
Second.
Any discussion? Comments? Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item 7.3, bylaw number 1736, final reading for Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service bylaw and Establishment, number 598, 2001, amendment number 694528, Allendale Road.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Final reading for bylaw number 1737 for Callwood West, Local Service Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number 625, amendment number 50, again for 528 Allendale Road.
Move final?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 7.5, bylaw number 1738, final reading for Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization, number 598, 2001, amendment number 74, 504 Halser Drive.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Usually it comes in two parts. It doesn't this time. 7.6, bylaw number 1739, first, second, and third readings on Elected Officials' Oath of Office, bylaw number 1739, 2018.
Move introduction, your worship?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move third? Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? There was no in-camera this evening, and therefore no release.
Move adjournment.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you.